How can a parent make a difference for children in the community? How can you learn to become a leader? Join us now for a town hall meeting from Connecticut's Old State House. Inspiring change, leadership starts with you. With Secretary of State Denise Merrill and community leaders from across Connecticut. Sponsored by Connecticut's Old State House, CTN, the Connecticut Network, the Connecticut Commission on Children, the Parent Leadership Training Institute, the Connecticut Civic Health Index Advisory Group, and Connecticut Humanity. Now, here's your host, Diane Smith.
And I'm Diane Smith, and welcome to our town hall meeting on leadership. I guess the question is, is a leader born, or is a leader made? And how does a person find a way to make a difference in his or her community? Well, for 20 years, the Parent Leadership Training Institute, PLTI, has been turning out leaders. Graduates have gone on to do everything from opening a summer bookmobile in their town, to bike trails, to actually getting elected to the state legislature. We hope that meeting some of them tonight is going to inspire you to get involved in our democracy as well, and maybe along the way you'll find out how you can learn some of the skills that you need to really get engaged and make a difference in your community. And we'll tell you how you can learn them too. We're going to give you an opportunity, if you'd like, to join a class. There had been some 2,300 graduates from about 20 communities across Connecticut who have completed the Parent Leadership Training Institute course of studies over 20 years. And they range everywhere from Greenwich to Wyndham and Danbury to New London. But first, I'd like to ask someone to step up to the podium, who is very involved in getting people involved in our communities and our democracy. In fact, I would have to say it is a passion of one of our elected leaders. The Secretary of State Denise Merrill recently took the pulse of how civically engaged we are here in Connecticut, and has a few things to tell us about that. Madam Secretary?
Thank you so much, Diane. And it's wonderful to be here with a group of leaders, and that's the way I think of all of you. And I think this historic structure is the perfect place to hold this conversation, because it has seen many generations of citizens come within its walls to debate, to create, to force change, and to resolve issues. And that's what we should all be about. I am here as the Secretary of the State, and I think many people know me as someone who is the chief elections officer, especially recently. But I also am co-chair of something called the Civic Health Index Committee, which I worked with a group called Everyday Democracy a year and a half ago. We put together a group to explore what we call "the civic health" of our state. It was actually kind of funny, because one of the first meetings we had, someone came in and thought it was a healthcare meeting. They're like, "We're here for the health meeting." No, we're talking civic health. And it is as important, maybe more so, than actual healthcare. We are trying to find out how people in Connecticut are expressing civic behavior, or if they are, and if so, how, and with whom, and what difference is it making? Civic health is basically determined in part by how well diverse groups of citizens work together, and with government, to solve public problems and strengthen their communities. That's kind of a little encapsulated definition. It's not just about voting, although obviously that is one measure of civic health. And I think one of the stunning things about the election that just happened was how many people came out to vote. And honestly, I was somewhat surprised. I had heard a lot of people say, "I'm sick of the negative ads, I'm not voting for any of these people." And yet, exactly the opposite thing happened. I think it'll take pundits years to figure it out. But I like to think that basically people just kind of said, "You know, we're not going to let anybody take this away from us. We're going to show up because we care." And I do think that was true. But it was a stunning election, even here in Connecticut, where, you know, there were some local, kind of statewide races that were important, but really, it was widely known that President Obama was way ahead in the polls. So that was not it. So I think that's something we all need to think about. But that is just one measure of how people behave relating to the government, and how they understand their interaction with their government. It's also about other ways we express our understanding that we're all part of a democratic society that finds solutions in working together, and through common institutions, not just government. And that's one of the findings we made in our report. We work through religious, and civic, and sports organizations, and family organizations. That is how we really all relate to each other, and that's what we wanted to find out, what's actually going on out there. Why should we care? Because, in order for a democracy to thrive, we must all be part of it. The broadest possible number of people need to be participating. It can't just be the few. And, you know, for many years, I've been thinking it's kind of going that way, but I think this last election gave me new hope on this front. I mean, I feel like it's reinvigorated in a way. And now, we need to understand what people are really doing out there. And as I think the country changes, a lot of people were feeling like they don't know how to access their government. It feels sometimes like only the people in power, only the people with money are the ones that know how to do this. But, and there's a sense, I think, that things aren't fair, they're not equitable, that people don't have the same access to power, to money, or whatever it is. And so, I think equity is really the key to civic health. You cannot have a democracy that is fair and free without equity for all. And I think that in Connecticut, there's been many years, we've talked about the two Connecticut's, the disparities that we have out there, particularly economically. And I think this came up again and again, as we sought to understand whether we have a really civically healthy society here in Connecticut. We issued a report, it's on my website, you can look at it at your leisure, there's many very interesting facts in it. But, so what happened was, we put this panel together, about 20 people, Diane Smith, by the way, was part of it, as were many others who are interested in this subject, and we set out to find out what's going on out there. We set out to find programs and policies that are working, that people are accessing, that they're using to express their civic participation. And did we find some? Yes, we did. And actually, tonight, I think we're here to discuss one of them. It is certainly the Parent Leadership Training Institute, this year celebrating its 20th anniversary, which is quite amazing. It seems hard to remember back, and I actually have been involved with this program for many, many years. For a while, I worked very hard on early childhood development, and worked with Elaine Zimmerman, who is the Director of the Commission on Children, who has really spearheaded this effort in a really quite remarkable way. And so, very quietly, and for many years now, the Parent Leadership Training Institute has been reaching parents, in collaboration, of course, with many other institutions that are helping over the years. And it started with the simple premise that parents, whether low-income, single mothers, working two jobs, or wealthy, care about the future of their children. You know, it's a very simple notion, when you think about it. Parents all want the right thing for their kids, and so, but they don't always know how to get there. They don't have the same tools, the same resources to do that. And so, the Parent Leadership Training Institute was born from that premise, that parents who care about their children are, can be leaders about their children, because they care about them. And that's where all leadership is born. It's in something that someone feels deeply about, and they want to change, they want to do something. I mean, that's how I got into politics, honestly. I never thought about it much until I was in my late 30s. I had three kids, and there was a program in the schools that, you know, I didn't think one of them was getting the right math program or something. I can't even remember what it was, to be honest. And that really got me, and I didn't really know how to do anything about that. But I ran into some other parents who did know, because they had been involved in politics. They knew how to organize, they knew how to get lists of other people to take on an issue, who cared about the same issue. That is literally how I got into politics, because we won our fight. We got that math program in the school. And we did it because we were a group of parents who said, "We're not going to put up with this, we're going to do something about it." And that's exactly, I think, at bottom, the premise of the Parent Leadership Training Institute. Today, after 20 years, they have enjoyed incredible success, they've developed leaders. I still remember, I was chair of the Appropriations Committee for a while, and in those days, you know, mostly well-heeled, well-paid lobbyists are the ones that come see us about various issues, and how they want resources for this and that. But I distinctly remember a group of parents who had gone to the institute, coming into our office, myself and my co-chair, and talking about programs they wanted for their kids. And it was remarkable, because they were articulate, and they knew what they wanted, and they didn't take no for an answer. It has stuck with me all these years. I try to go to many of the graduation ceremonies, I ran into someone tonight who said, "I remember seeing you there." I'm always thrilled to see them walk down the aisle to get their certificates, and people cheering for them, and it's just a wonderful program. I've seen them lobby at the General Assembly, I've seen them fight for their kids, and that's what they're all about. And now, I understand there's even two that have been elected to public office. You know, not that that's the pinnacle of success, but it shows that they learned something about leadership. Anyone can be a leader if they have the self-confidence in themselves, and they want something, particularly if it's for your children, that's a powerful motivator. So, I am delighted to be here tonight. I hope we hear many of these experiences, and I look forward to listening to the panel about the experiences, not only with PLTI, but just this whole notion that leaders can be developed, can be given the tools to do things that they want to accomplish. So, congratulations to all of you who have been in PLTI, it's a wonderful program. Congratulations to Elaine and all the many others who have worked on this over the years. And thank you for letting me be here and talk about it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Merrill. And as we said, this is a town hall-style meeting, and we hope to get a conversation going that includes many of the people who are in our studio audience tonight. But first, I'd like to introduce some of our panelists to you. One of the people that maybe Secretary Merrill was talking about when she said some of these leaders have gone on to run for office is Kathy Abercrombie. Kathy has just been elected to her fifth term as the state representative from the 83rd district, which covers Meriden, Berlin, and Kensington. Kathy is the Assistant Majority Leader and the Vice Chair of the Appropriations Committee, and it all started with Parent Leadership Training. Kathy, let me ask you first, what led you to go into the training? What was it that motivated you to go ahead and take these classes?
Well, it goes to what Denise was saying, you know. At that time, I have three sons, my sons are now in their 20s. At that time, my kids were in elementary school, and it started with something very simple. We wanted to get a sidewalk around our elementary school. So I went to the mayor, who told me, "No problem, Kath, I'll take care of it for you." Come to find out, I didn't realize, we have a ceremonial mayor in Meredith. He really couldn't do anything. So through talking to people, I found out that the city council was the person I had to find out in my area. So after that experience, I thought, you know, shame on me. I should really figure out how to navigate the system. And at that time, in our town, we have David Radcliffe, who runs Children's First, who does this program. He approached me, he said, "Kath, you should really try this program, it's right up your alley, you love to advocate on behalf of your school and your community, why don't you give it a try?" And I did, and loved it, and here I am.
And we'll find out a little bit later how that led to a seat in the General Assembly, but thank you for getting us started.
Thank you.
Our next panelist is Donna Thompson Bennett. She is a parent and a former attorney, has more than 15 years in advocacy experience centered on parent leadership and civic engagement. Her professional service includes coordinator of the Bridgeport Public School Parent Center and Bridgeport Parent Leadership Training Institute. She now serves as the curriculum trainer and manager for the National Parent Leadership Training Institute. And Donna, thank you for being here, and I'd like to just start with one question. How has Bridgeport changed because of leadership training among parents?
Wow. We come from a community that had actually thought that parents had given up on their community and on society, and in some ways, even on getting the best outcomes for their children. And because of the Parent Leadership Training Institute, I knew that what was missing was the opportunity for parents to have and find their vehicle for voice. And with a wonderful group of people known as the Civic Design Team, having great influence from other PLTI sites like Stanford PLTI, the wonderful work of the Commission on Children with Elaine Zimmerman, we have been able to embed PLTI in the Bridgeport community for over 16 years now. And that slow, steady build encouraged parents to rediscover their civic voice, and to get involved in ways that they always possibly wanted to, but felt that in a community that they didn't trust the body politic, and didn't believe their leaders were representing them in the best way possible, that maybe they shouldn't be involved. That's completely changed now. You not only have parents who are involved in being a part of commissions, being a part of local boards that are about advocating for the best outcomes for children, but you have them also being involved in different groups in parent education, whether that's on the school level, whether it's on the district level, or we have someone here in the audience, Hernan Illenworth, who's taken it from the local level of school, and being there for his daughter, to being there for all the children of Bridgeport as a parent leader, as a member of the Board of Education. And that's an elected member of the Board of Ed.
Well, Donna, thank you, that's a very inspiring story, and we're going to get into that a little bit more as we go along. Our next panelist is Trish Moylan Torreya, and you are the Assistant Director of the Department of Families, Children, Youth, and Recreation for the City of Hartford. And I should say that Trish leads the Family Civics Initiative, an effort within city government designed to align state and city resources to improve the health of families and children. She's a native of Puerto Rico, Trish is bilingual and bicultural. And we asked you specifically to be here because we wanted to find out, how and why does a city take on a mission like this?
Well, I think that municipal government, if it is really going to be responsive to the needs of Hartford families and our citizens, we need not only to invite parents to the table, but really equip them to be those equal partners. And I feel very proud to live in a city. I wasn't here 20 years ago, when PLTI started. I was living, it might have been Puerto Rico, I don't remember, but I'm very proud to be part of a city that actually, I think, gave birth to PLTI. And it was the American Leadership Institute, a group of leaders in the making, who had this vision for how we can really extend leadership to others in our community. But very specifically, I feel very, very privileged to be part of an administration, especially our mayor, Pedro Segarra, who really is committed to making sure that we are hearing the voices of our citizens, our residents, in terms of making decisions. I was struck by a poster that I saw outside that said, "Right now, someone is making a decision that impacts your life." And I think that happens every day in government, and we want to make sure that we're not making decisions for families, but with families.
Trish, thank you so much. David Nie is the Executive Director of the William Casper Graustein Memorial Fund, which has been investing in parent leadership training for more than a decade now. And David, I guess the obvious question is to ask you, why?
It's a great question. Earlier, Kathy alluded to Children First in Meriden. The Discovery, uh, excuse me, the Memorial Fund's about the business of funding an initiative called Discovery, and it gives grants for collaboration to 53 communities across the state, including Meriden and others. Our objective in doing so is that children of all races and from, all income levels are ready for school by age five, and successful learners by age nine. To do that, you need parent engagement. And we quickly learned that parents are the real driver of change in communities. They need a set of tools and skills to do it, as Trish was pointing out. Getting parents to the table is one thing, supporting them and being there is another. And I've not found anything that equals Parent Leadership Training Institute in doing that. So where there are good stories, and there are many of them, in Discovery, you usually find that powerful parent engagement has been aligned with Parent Leadership Training Institute to produce those results.
People think about leadership training and what that involves, and David, you said something to me before the program began, that just made so much sense, and I thought maybe in a way it almost sums it up. You said, "Nobody is born knowing how to run a meeting."
Yes, that wasn't original with me, that was actually our community program officer, Maria Mojica, so, she's now on the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving team. But it was her way of signaling all the kinds of support. We had all kinds of cues and support, growing up, or going to college, or whatever, that helped us be ready, and then probably we weren't as ready as we thought we were, which is a whole nother issue. But, you know, if you attend a PLTI training, or above all, a PLTI graduation, you'll be moved, I've seen grown men move to tears by the eloquence of the people. And once you see it again and again, you realize, this isn't an accident. This is a process that learns to get extraordinary results out of ordinary people. I'll tell a story, I'll keep it anonymous, I'll say it happened in Torrington. Person had not completed her college education, moved to Torring, new to the community, the whole nine yards, and she gets involved with PLTI. And she gets involved with the Discovery Collaborative in Torrington. And one day, she's driving down the street, and she's passing a bus stop, it's the middle of the winter, there's kids out at the bus stop, and some of them don't have jackets. She said, "What's going on here?" And they said, "Well, we don't have enough jackets, so we trade back and forth." And she said, "This isn't right." And had the confidence, because of PLTI, to go back to the governing group of that Discovery Initiative and say, "There's kids standing on street corners in the winter without jackets." When we thought of Discovery, we didn't imagine this would be one of the manifestations of it, but somebody offered their garage as a place to hold clothing. Many people offered to go out and get clothing. First year, 1,000 articles of clothing distributed to 600 families. It's now become a regional thing, 16,000 pieces of clothing across many towns in the region, because one woman drove down the street and said, "This isn't acceptable." As far as I'm concerned, this program turns everybody into Robert F. Kennedy or their own version of it.
David, in about 15 seconds, tell us what the Discovery Initiative is.
Well, as I said, the goal is that children of all races are ready for school by age five, and successful learners by age nine. And what it is, is looking at those critical years, from birth or even prenatally to age eight, from birth to literacy, and trying to support communities and helping their children. The grant we make draws together a collaboration of local citizens, public officials, parents, everybody who's got a stake in the lives of children. They get together, they create a blueprint for what they want to see happen with those kids, and then they begin to move out and make the activities happen. And when it works, I mean, Meriden is a beautiful, beautiful thing. Meriden is, as far as I know, until challenged, the smallest municipality in the United States to receive one of those vaunted promised neighborhood planning grants. Only 15 awards nationally, and this city of 50,000 competed with the Chicagos and New Yorks and won. Why? Because they have excellent parent engagement, because they have a blueprint, and it wasn't hard to morph from that into a federal proposal. That's just a couple of powerful examples of the kinds of things that go on.
It's pretty amazing, congratulations on that. Now, in our audience are several graduates of PLTI, and I want you to find out a little bit more about them, so you'll see how they put their training into practice. The gentleman with me right here is Doug Edwards, and Doug, thank you so much for coming tonight, he's from Manchester. And you started a program called Real Dads Forever, tell me what that's about.
Well, we try to develop programs for fathers, to get them engaged with their children in the school setting, or whether they're in prison, or in churches, to have an emotional connection with them, and to be really interested in what they themselves have that will inspire their children.
What made you decide that a program like that was needed, Doug?
Somebody asked me. And I was quite surprised when they did. There was a program in Manchester, a teen parents program that was part of the Manchester Family Development Center at the hospital, and they were mostly working with young women to teach them about prenatal care, and about fetal development and child development. And a bunch of guys started showing up, and they didn't know what to do with them. So, I had helped out the town with the development of their parental involvement policy, so they asked me to start the program. But since that time, I've been inspired by them. I can remember going home and telling my wife, you know, "Babe, I got paid tonight, I got paid." And it was simply the fact that these guys were getting it, they were beginning to see how important they were, and what their particular value was in the life of their child, and it was a turning point for them. Inspired, and that's what inspired me.
Wonderful. And the interesting thing, of course, is, as Doug said, and thank you, Doug, he was asked, and isn't that one of the things that really this, we found with this Parent Leadership Training? And Elaine, since you were the founder of it, I'll have you stand up for a minute, this is Elaine Zimmerman of the Commission on Children. Sometimes people just need to be asked.
So, the PLTI started 20 years ago, when we asked parents to come together to tell us what concerns they had for the state. And parents came out of the woodwork, scared, shy, to share. And what happened that turned everything around was, they shared, they had ideas, they joined together, and then someone said, "But I'm just a parent," and everybody quieted. And that sentence became a sentence at every meeting, and it quieted the room. And I learned from that, that parents have been taught that they're not a constituency, they don't count, and that their ideas should be quieted. And as soon as that sentence emerged, it became clear that it was not just a Connecticut sentence, but a national sentence. So we began to wonder, what happened that parents are so important, but they've been quieted in our state and in the country? So I went back to the parents, just like you're saying, Diane, and I asked, "What could we do so your voice would be heard?" And they said, "We want to learn how it really works. We want to learn who's really in charge, we want to learn how to speak, we want to learn how the money works, and we want to learn how to work with people who are different from us." And really, the rest is history. We had one big question, once parents said what they wanted to learn, which was, "Did we know how change happens for children in the United States and in Connecticut? And could we teach that?" And we started answering that question in Hartford. People said no one would come, they were wrong, they had a waiting list. It was at that time, 10 weeks, and no one left, no one quit. And at the end of 10 weeks, parents said, "This is too short."
Okay. And so now, it is 20 weeks. And thank you, Elaine. And I should say that for those parents in the audience who are thinking, "How could I possibly commit to a 20-week course?", it's made as easy as possible by the fact that included in the parents' involvement is the potential for getting childcare at some of the sites, even getting dinner, transportation, so trying to get all of the barriers out of the way that can possibly prevent people. And I want you to join us for just a minute, would you stand up, please? Tell me a little bit about the training that you went through, and why you decided to do it, Kelly.
I went through the training in Milford, and I did it because I have a child with special needs, and I wanted to be able to advocate for him as best possible. And I knew that I didn't know how everything was run, and I wanted to learn about how that happened. So, I made the choice to get involved, and it was the best experience I could ever ask for.
Now, you know, people will say, "It's hard enough being a mom and having a family," and I'm not sure, maybe you're also working outside the home, "and you have a child with disabilities." How did you figure out how to fit this into your life?
Well, it's in the evening, so it's not bad, it was from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. My husband is home in the evening, so he was able to watch the children, and I was able to go at night and do, you know, go to class every week, and I actually look forward to it. It was a little bit of a break every week, too, to get out of the house, but...
So maybe I shouldn't tell people that it's good that there's childcare, maybe it's better if they leave the kids at home with somebody else and get away?
Yeah, you know, all in all, it was great to be able to talk to other people who have the same passions that I did, and wanted to see the same results, and people that thought like you, and wanted to make a difference.
And let's talk about what came out of that, what you helped to start in your community.
I started a special education parent teacher association, because I felt that there was just not enough information out there for parents relating to special needs and special education. I had to do a lot of research on my own, scouring the internet, you know, reading a lot, and I just wanted to bring something, not just for the parents, but for the school district, the teachers, everybody, because the teachers and the school districts don't always know how the parents, what they're understanding, and what they're perceiving, and there's a lot of miscommunication. So, we offer workshops, the district's been great, they've actually used it, whereas parents have questions, they want that feedback, because they want to look at how they can change their district to make it more accommodating to parents, too, so.
Well, thank you, it was good talking to you. Donna, I want to ask you, with the experiences that you've had at the various schools in Bridgeport and elsewhere, now making this into a national program, are schools always as welcoming, as what Kelly seemed to find in her school district, to parents who... to parents who have ideas?
It depends. There are some great welcoming schools in Bridgeport, and there are those who are striving to get there. But what we have found is that the parents who are on the ground, the parent leaders of those various schools, whether it's through the local PAC or if they happen to be graduates of PLTI, they really reach out and make sure that other parents are included in the process. The district-wide PAC has done great work, and a lot of those leaders happen to be graduates of PLTI, on making sure that parents are key decision-makers. They're partners with other educators, principals, as well as teachers. There's not only the School Leadership Council, but there's also now the School Governance Council that's happening. And so there's input from parents to really push that welcoming environment to happen.
Kathy Abercrombie, I want to ask you, when parents show up at the state legislature for public hearings on some of the committees that you sit on, do they seem to know how to handle what goes on? Because, you know, I watch the legislature all day, working at CTN, and sometimes I don't know what's going on, and I like to think I'm studying it.
Actually, I think we at the legislature have done a good job of trying to make parents feel comfortable. You know, when they sit down to testify, we tell them to take their time, you know, read from a script if they have to, because it's, you know, hard to talk off the cuff. And we tell them, "Just take your time," you know. I've been fortunate because I'm a true believer in PLTI, because I'm a graduate. I host every year my PLTI class from Meriden. They come up and they spend an evening with us, and a lot of times, we're in session, so they get to see the movement that's going on on the floor. You know, and I think it's important for them to understand that we work for you. That's our job. So it's great for them to come up. But I think parents, you know, it's unnerving at first, but I think we try to make them feel comfortable.
I should also say that PLTI takes parents of all ages. There are teen parents, there are grandparents who are raising children. There are people like George Hensinger. George, would you stand up, please? I understand that you started in on all this after you retired.
That's correct. That's correct.
What motivated you, George?
Well, I had a bit of a health issue when I retired. And once I came out the other side of that, I had 20, 30 more years and what to do with it. And I'm not a golfer, so.
That's a good motivator.
So I took a look at what I thought society's, some of society's problems were, and I came to the conclusion that children, a lot of the children today, especially teenagers, grow up without empathy. The things they're able to do to other people and animals and all sorts of things just led me to believe that somewhere, they missed empathy in their development. So I did some research on when and where and how empathy is developed. And it's on a learning curve like most things, but the part of the peak is in birth to five. By the time they come into kindergarten, they're, they can already have, develop a good sense of empathy. And of course, once again, the parents are the best teachers. And if they see their parents donating to charities and being kind to animals, they pick up that sense from the parents. And by the way, I also became a preschool teacher. And what we do in preschool is we try to get the child to identify the emotion with the word. So you'll hear a preschool teacher say, "I see you're angry," or "I see you're happy," or "I see you're disappointed." Tell me about it. And so after a while, they connect the word with the emotion, and then I can say, "I think Johnny is a little angry that you took his truck." And now he knows how Johnny feels because he knows what that emotion feels like and what the word means. And that's part of how we try to develop empathy in children. And of course, Graustein and the Discovery community fit right into the window I was looking at. And one day, I just opened the newspaper, and I was trying to figure out, how do I, where do I start? What do I do? And came to the conclusion, you just have to kind of jump in the middle of it and then thrash about until you figure out what's going on. And there was an ad for a PLTI class in Norwalk. And so I jumped in and thrashed about.
Well, as someone who lives in Norwalk, I want to thank you for doing that in my community. So thank you very much. By the way, if anybody in our audience would like to ask a question or make a comment, please just raise your hand or kind of give me the high sign, and we'll be happy to bring a microphone over to you or if any of the panelists want to comment and anything that any of the people in the audience say. Please don't be shy, anybody, and please speak up. We have a whole family here that I want to introduce. Stephanie Alderman, would you stand up? And let's have the whole family stand up. Okay. Now, I mentioned that PLTI deals with parents of all ages, but it also has programs for teens and for kids and for getting entire families involved. Stephanie, tell me about the project that you and your family got started.
The most recent project?
Okay, yes.
We're very proud of the Bookmobile that we have started in Middletown, partnering up with the district and attacking literacy by that summer slide that all our teachers were complaining about. We wanted to get more books into children's hands. And obviously, funding is a problem for everyone. So we started with just collecting gently-loved books. The schools all came together and they started collecting books. We partnered with Russell Library and several other wonderful groups like Read to Grow. And since then, in two years of having our wonderful elementary school principals drive this vehicle, we've given away over 6,400 books. Just for them to keep, new and gently-used. And we're very proud of that. And my children and my family made it possible. My children volunteer on the bus. There's a lot of sorting involved and a lot of volunteers.
Let me just lean across you for a minute and give this microphone to your daughter. Victoria, tell us a little bit about getting involved with this with your mom. And did you think that this was a great idea for you, or did you say, "Mom, come on"?
No, in the very beginning, we definitely read a lot in our family. And so we had the, you know, opportunity and pleasure of growing up, reading, and having lots of books in our house. And so when this project came about, and we had the opportunity to share that with other people and other kids, you know, who might not have access to books, you know, it was just something that I personally felt really great about because I love reading and I love, you know, sharing that. It's definitely a gift, you know.
Would you hold the microphone for David and let him just say something about that? David, what do you do on the Bookmobile?
Well, I, when I have a chance, I would come with my mom, and we would follow the Bookmobile in our van. And when we would stop, I would get out and I would hop on my bike, and I would ride around wherever we were. And my mom called me the town prior because I would just go around, "The Bookmobile's here. The Bookmobile's here." And kids would come out, and they would come and follow me, and they would come back to the Bookmobile, and I would help them find, like, just right books for them and help them use, like, the five finger rule.
What's the five finger rule?
It's you try, you open up to a page in a book, and you read and see if you, and every word you can't read or you don't know, you count it on your fingers. And if you get four or five, it's like too hard for you. If you get zero or one, it's too easy for you. And if you get two to three, it's like a just right book for you. And I helped out a whole bunch of kids get books.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Diane, if I, if I could just make a comment?
Please, Kathy, yes.
I think that's, this is a perfect example of why this program is so important. Because it's not just for the parents. She's growing a whole family of leaders. They're our future. They're our next generation. I mean, how much better is it than that?
I agree with that. And I also think that the earlier that you get children to start volunteering and to become leaders and be involved in their community, the more they will want to be involved for the rest of their lives. Am I ringing a bell for you, Stephanie?
I would just like to add one thing, and that is, for those who don't know, CLTI is a children's version of the PLTI program. And my daughters all participated in. So when I was having my class, and those PLTI grads in here know, on diversity as an example, my children also participated in their version of learning about diversity. And they did a project, which I'm going to just mention really quick, and that was that we finished having a very in-depth conversation in class. And there were several ouch moments where people were sharing some personal moments. And I was wondering, how did they handle this in the children's version? And my kids came out and told me, "Mom, we had eggs, and Emily had six of them." And I said, "What?" They had eggs. They had brown eggs, blue eggs, white eggs. And guess what, Mom? All the eggs were the same on the inside. And I was like, "They got it. They're getting it." So it opened up conversations for our family, and it's a wonderful program, so I just let's share that.
Thank you for sharing that. I appreciate that very much.
Diane, if I could just add, you just really shared the whole concept around how Bridgeport PLTI has embraced PLTI as a family civics initiative, literally. Not just the PLTI piece of it, but we also, we were the pilot organization for CLTI, and I'm very proud that we had that honor. Very grateful for the work that has happened through CLTI. But what also occurred in Bridgeport is that we recognized that our families wanted everyone to participate. So not just three- to 12-year-olds, but also the 13, the 14, and sometimes the 15-year-olds. And so as a result of that, we followed also some of the guides from Stanford, and we included those teenagers initially as junior teachers. And then, because other people saw what was happening with PLTI and CLTI, they said, "Can't we do something for the teens?" And so we now have what we call the Teen Leadership Institute. It's gone through a couple of different changes, but it is parallel also to PLTI, and it was done with Ron Thomas and collaboration and support from the person who was doing it specifically, Sharon Williams here at the children's, you know, commission. So I just think that when we talk about family civics, it is so important to engage the entire family, either directly or indirectly. But we're really fortunate in Bridgeport that we actually get to do it directly by having all three components.
The next person I'd like to call on here, if I can call on you, is Betty Sugarman Weintraub from the Liberty Bank Foundation. Whenever I go to Middletown, I always see Liberty Bank right there on the main street. Why did the foundation decide to get involved? And here's a family who, you know, they're doing something great in Middletown with the Bookmobile. But why did you decide to be involved with this kind of a program?
Absolutely. This program for us, if you want to invest wisely, this program is the program to invest in parent leadership of all different types. We've funded Parent Leadership Training Institute, the People Empowering People, the Parents Supporting Educational Excellence. All of these programs are, talk to our core priority, which is to support positive preventative programs for children and family of low to moderate income. And we're proud to say that we're supporting about almost 10 programs throughout our service area by providing grants. And also, not just providing grants, but convening groups to come together if they've never run parent programming. We convene stakeholders to meet about it and then spawn off that those programs begin. So we've been able to do that in West Hartford. We've been able to do that in Wallingford, is now a community that's looking to start parent programming. So we are thrilled to be able to do this program because, as has been mentioned on several occasions, this is a transformational program, not only for the parents, but also for the children. So the children become, not just Stephanie's children, but children throughout the communities are, they're the ones that are collecting the pennies to support the Katrina victims or, you know, any other kinds of causes. They're collecting food for food banks. And this is the kind of program that we want to support as a foundation. This is a change agent, really. It's a catalyst for change, and we're thrilled.
Thank you so much for supporting it. I'm going to ask, where's Andrew Lockman?
Ah, over there.
Oh, there you are. Okay, there you are. I wanted to ask you, you're from the Center for School Change. Tell me a bit about how schools deal with parents who now come to them and have issues, have questions, but don't really have the background or the training like the training that we've been talking about. How do those parents generally fold into the community of the school? Do they get their voices heard?
I think there's a range of ways that schools deal with parents. We want parents to be trained. It's why, in addition to PLTI, the center created a program called Parents Supporting Educational Excellence. Parents need to have the skills and tools to be able to work with a school, to be in positions of school governance, to be valuable to the school community and making sure that parents play a role in educational improvement, and to be partners with the school. Because we know that engaged parents make a difference in student achievement, in student attendance, and in whether or not students actually graduate from school.
So they can make a difference in their own children's lives, but they also make a difference in the life of the school itself?
That's exactly right. I mean, it basically is one of the important pieces, along with a good curriculum and excellent leadership in the school and highly qualified teachers, you need really engaged parents.
Thank you. Tricia, I want to ask you to talk about that a little bit because the Hartford schools have had a number of initiatives over the last few years. There've been several new superintendents over the last few years. How are the voices of the parents heard? And how much are parents willing to get involved in what happens at schools?
That is an excellent question, and I think that one of the things that's so important in terms of parent leadership is having other leaders who are truly receptive to parent voices. And again, I don't, I don't work within the school system. I can tell you my impressions in terms of being part of municipal government. I think that the leadership changes across the years have made it a little bit more difficult, I think, for superintendents to become very clear and very consistent in welcoming parent voices. So that is something that concerns me. I also am concerned about the fact that we here, this community of what I think of as PLTIers or Pepsters, have a very clear sense of what we're really talking about when we're talking about equal partners. I am always concerned that sometimes parents are invited to the table, and it's really much more of, "We want to make sure we can say you are involved, but you're not." So to tell you the truth, I think it's something that we need to do much better on. I can tell you that now that Mayor Segarra and the Director of the Department of Families, Children, Youth, and Recreation, Jose Colón-Rivas, are on the Board of Education, I do believe that there is going to be much more of an opening for the school system to really be more responsive to parents in the way that we're really talking about here, in a truly empowered way.
We have about 15 minutes left in the program, and I'd like to invite anybody that hasn't had a chance to speak yet to just kind of raise your hand if you want to have a chance to say something. We'll be happy to come over to you with a microphone and medallion. You've been smiling at me, so I think it's your turn. Would you mind standing up, please? Tell me a little bit about what came out of your having graduated from the Leadership Institute.
Okay, I'm from New Haven. And when I became a PLTI student, New Haven in the state of Connecticut was moving from prevention services to abuse and neglect. And here comes PLTI in the very important time where the community felt left alone, behind, and gave an opportunity.
I'm going to stop you just for a minute because I want you to explain the terms that you were just talking about, about the type of services, for people that aren't as familiar as you are.
Yes. People that were having a difficult time raising their kids with, you know, the income they were receiving, and monies were cut. And programs that were helping them from prevention services to get them the skills to really go to school and move on and get a degree. And so that really hurt and hindered a lot of families. But PLTI came in the right time. And so I was a volunteer in the school and also volunteer in the community. And so it gave me and others, because I said, "I'm not going alone. I'm going to take more parents like me to really get engaged and become leaders in their communities." And so it gave us validation that we are a changing nation, that we can make a difference not only in our families, but in our community and our city and our state. And we can send a message, and we can turn things around. We started with computers that were going to be removed from the classrooms to a center that our politicians were not giving it attention, and we really needed to renovate it. And then our school, we didn't want it renovated. We want it brand-new. And there it is. And I sent Alderman. It just gave me an opportunity to be in the center stage of where leaders are making decisions.
And I was going to say that your leadership training led to you running for City Alderman.
That was my practicum. And it took me. It took me, it took me a lot of sweat and tears to bring the voice of the community and the families to where it was needed and bring common sense. And it gives me a great honor that, you know, it's been 15 years. I'm going to my fifth term. I have more to offer, but now, like I said, you keep growing, you keep learning, you keep validating what you do for your families and for your communities, and then you keep bringing more along. This is a program that transformed from the This is a program that transformed from the inner selves to the family structure, to the community, and to really making a difference in our state. And I wasn't a politician. PLTI helped me understand. And then the committee and my leaders that came with me to learn, they said, it's your time. We need you. And so now I need more people. And we should be embracing programs like this that really gives not only the tools, but shows you within yourself that everybody has a purpose, and that even though we defer culturally and where we come from, we all have all of the difference. I learned personalities, and that we have so many things to do, and that, like for me, like the dream thing to pass the Dream Act here in Connecticut. Well, you know what? I don't need to be one of the dreamers, but I know that I'm part of a family, that there's somebody who needs it. So we organized our neighborhood, and we got it passed through the state. So everything is possible. We just have to give and take and share.
Well, that's a wonderful story. And when Medalia mentioned that that was her practicum, I should say that as part of the leadership training, everyone has to take on a project in order to complete their training. They have to complete a project. And that was a pretty great project, I would say. Ernan Illingworth is here with us now. Would you stand up, please? Tell me a little bit about how you got involved. I gather it was because you were really thinking about your daughter and about her education, and somehow that led to something much bigger for you.
Yeah, yeah.
Not that anything is bigger than a child's education, but maybe broader.
That's exactly right. It all started with me was, my daughter was about to go into kindergarten, and I made a promise to her that I would be there every step of the way. But the challenge for me was, how was I going to keep that promise? Because I knew it was just, it's much more than just going to report card conferences or attending parent meetings. It's much more than being an advocate. We as parents need to be a voice for our children because they are the future. And I really believe in that. And I saw the opportunity where I learned about PLTI, and I said, maybe leadership is what the answer. And I took the 20-week. It was a life-changing experience.
Did you think of yourself as a leader before you took the class? Did you know you had this inside of you?
Before I took the class, I would say no. But during the journey, I would say I was a leader because that's what made me come to there because I wanted to receive those tools. Because I believe it's our civic duty to give back and make sure that our children have what they need and services, et cetera.
And you now serve on the Board of Education?
Yes, I do.
Well, thank you so much for that. And how's your daughter doing in school, by the way?
She's doing awesome. She's great.
What grade is she in now?
She's a sophomore.
Wow, that's wonderful. Thank you so much for talking to us a little bit about that. Edith, stand up. Eden Wang is with us. She is a graduate also, and she works as a public health nurse in Stanford. And what I was wondering about is, everybody has a different leadership style. How does the training bring that out in a person?
I think it just goes into you and brings the best out of you. I think it gives a voice to each and every one of us. And I was in the first class ever in Stanford, PLTI, which Olga Brown had brought into the city, and it was in 1996. And ever since then, I've always been involved in making sure that they have the space and meals for every meal. And I stay with the class under their tone. And in my small way, that's my contribution to it because I know that it impacts everybody differently, just, you know, as you have heard from everybody. So I want to make sure that the chance goes on.
Thank you, Eden. Kathy, one of the things that I don't know if we've brought out sufficiently, really, is that all kinds of parents join this class or take this class. Stephanie was mentioning about learning to deal with the diversity. Really, we've seen parents from all social sectors, very diverse groups, so it's not just for children in schools in maybe a distressed district. It's really for everybody.
That's right, absolutely. You know, in my district, I come from a very diverse community, you know? And I think that's what's very positive about this program because it helps parents understand how to deal with all different personalities. And to understand that people are different, but we're really all the same. We just look at things differently. And to appreciate other people's personalities and what they bring to the table, you know? And I agree, for all of you PLTI graduates in here, you know what I'm talking about. It gets emotional in this class. It gets very emotional. It pulls out, you know, some things that people don't really think that they're going to share, and they do. But it makes us grow as people. And I just think it's a wonderful program. And I have to put a little plug in. Even though I was the only PLTI graduate that was elected to office, as of January, my colleague from Meriden, Hilda Santiago, will be the second PLTI graduate to be a state senator.
Ava, would you mind standing up? Ava, I'm going to have you look toward this camera, if you don't mind. Tell me a little bit about what Kathy was talking about, how certain things come out in class that maybe people weren't expecting to come out. What was your experience?
Well, it's funny that you bring that point up because for me, I had, you know, being an African-American woman, all my life I've had to experience some challenging situations and, I wouldn't say tolerating, but being in situations where maybe I didn't feel quite understood or maybe feeling like I wasn't in the room with like-minded folks. But I have to tell you, I initially thought I was just an observer, and I was watching all of this stuff happening and people having these epiphanies. And towards, I would say, I would say towards the middle of the program, I realized that I needed to do some changing and looking inward, and that I wasn't a spectator, that I am a participant. And I believe towards the end, it became clear to me that I needed to accept my role as a leader. I believe you asked, you started with, are leaders born or are they made? And for me, I believe I was born a leader, but PLTI developed my leadership skills. So it's been, it's been a journey, it's a process, and now I trust the process a little more.
Sounds to me like you were one of the resistant ones in the beginning.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And now you're on the Middletown Board of Education?
I am, and I'm really proud to say that the Alderman children are a product of the Middletown Public Schools.
Well, we've been talking for almost an hour, but the beauty of CTN is, we can go as long as we want to. So I wouldn't keep you here all night, but I think we still have a few things that we want to say. Donna, I just wanted to have you stand up for a minute. This is Donna Marino. Tell me a little bit about what parents, like Ava, like Stephanie, what they've done in terms of how the schools operate now in your city.
Well, in Middletown, we have over 200 parent leaders that have graduated over the past 13 years, and they're doing many things. They're presidents of our PTAs, they're serving on the Governance Councils, they're serving on commissions, they ran for council, they've run for Board of Ed. One of our other graduates was recently elected to the Board of Education, and at his graduation speech, he was our speaker at graduation, and he said at graduation, well, maybe one day I'll run for Board of Ed. Well, needless to say, the Chair of the Democratic Town Committee was in the audience at graduation, and she got him right away and said, oh, you could run right now. And he did. I just like to say that parent leadership gets under your skin. I mean, we've had funding issues over the year, and we advocate very strongly for it. But when you hear what parents are doing in their community, what they're doing for children, you want to keep fighting for parent leaders, and you want to develop more parent leaders throughout the city. And we talked about diversity, and I think one of the exciting things is, we say that people that come to parent leadership, some have many, many Ds or no Ds at all. But to affect change in the community, you have to work with your community. And our community is diverse, and so we need to make sure that all those people are at the table when we're affecting change. And that's what parent leadership does. It lets you practice that in a small community, and then you're willing to step up to the plate and become a parent leader in many, many ways, so.
Well, sounds really good. David, Donna was talking about how funding has been an issue at times. Tell me a little bit more about how foundations and other philanthropies can be involved in this and why you would urge them to do it.
Well, first of all, I ought to say, this is your 20th birthday, PLTI, but I'm glad that people have referenced other programs, like People Empowering People, because Connecticut is a hotbed of parent leadership development. It's one of the things we do well, and I think PLTI sets the standard. Among her many other accomplishments, Elaine Zimmerman helped to create something called the Parent Trust Fund, which is a little vehicle in state government that helps fund these programs. And we looked at it and thought it was good. And it was at that time at a funding base of $250,000. Being the kind of enterprising funders we like to be at the Grausstein Memorial Fund, we went to the state, to the legislature, and the executive branch and said, for every dollar you raise above that base of $250,000, we will meet you, dollar for dollar, to a limit of 250,000. And the upshot of that was a $750,000 Parent Trust Fund instead of a 250,000. It allowed us to about double the number of programs operating statewide in all of these venues. And for value, I think Betty said it all, I think any funder who's ever participated isn't, this isn't just you respect the grant you've made. You realize your institution is honored by the grant you've made because of what you helped unleash in communities. It's a phenomenal program, and I keep coming back to that, by the way, since we've been talking about, and I really appreciate that Kathy said, there's lots of ways to succeed with your PLTI education. A woman I mentioned who looked out the windshield in Tarrington and said, "Mill Moore," went on to the governing board of Tarrington Early Childhood Council, became its chair, and got elected to the Board of Education. You might be beginning to see a patent here. But it's also true, and I have a lot of respect for this. There was a debate in our boardroom about, well, if we're funding early childhood, shouldn't we insist that PLT align to early childhood? And first of all, obviously, they hadn't met Elaine Zimmerman, so this was not a conversation I would have looked forward to, but I thought not. This is about the aspirations of the people, as Elaine makes clear. And I remember going to a graduation ceremony, early days in Norwalk, and people were talking about their practicum. And two women were helping to found a drug treatment center, and one simply wanted to beautify a local charter school with plantings and flowers. And the beauty of PLTI is, it's got room for all of the aspirations and all of the ambitions. So I welcome any fellow funder to jump in.
Well, I just wanted to add to that. You know, the Grausstein Foundation has been so supportive to not only our communities, but to the state of Connecticut. And they're a perfect example of public-private coming together and doing what's right, you know? And we, as all of us in this room, cannot thank you, David, and your foundation for everything you've done for this state, and we're so fortunate to have them here. We really, really are.
Well, we're also fortunate to have the Hartford Foundation. Richard Sussman is joining us. Tell us how involved you've gotten in this and what your, what your foundation has done to try to support this.
Let me say first, Aaron, how proud I am to be a Connecticut resident and be here tonight. I mean, to hear the parents that we've heard, to be part of the philanthropic community that we've discussed, to have public employees, public sector engagement like we have, it makes me, I was proud last Tuesday, I'm proud again tonight. One of the things that really has been incredibly important to us with our work with PLTI was it was those parent leaders that convinced the Board of the Hartford Foundation in 1995 to make a tremendous change. After 60 years, it made its first grant directly to parents. And then spent a year working with those parents to design a program that would serve parents and children in their community. Then those parents worked together with the community-based nonprofit organizations to open up neighborhood-based family centers. But parents stayed in control. They got the check, they hired the staff, they worked with people from the very beginning. And those programs now are over 15 years old. There are six of them, and they're led by people like the people in this room. Parents who have learned a set of skills, who are committed to their community, and who are teaching the professional community how to rethink what they do.
Interesting. Thank you, Richard. I wanted to ask the woman who's sitting next to you to stand up, please, for a minute. I know you've been dreading this moment, but, Robin, I just want to just give you a moment to highlight what you have done with the training that you've gotten.
I'm a grateful Meriden graduate, as a Pug to Meriden. My project is connecting, I'm passionate about leadership. I've seen over the years the difference, the parents see UConn, Pep, and PLTI grow. And over the years, I kept meeting parents from all over the state, talk about what they've been doing in their communities. And I wanted to participate in PLTI so I could complete a project, but also advocate for all of these and participate firsthand in it, since I've been connected with Pep. My project is connecting the UConn-Pep program to our military families and veterans. So I'm actively working on that. When we talk about having a voice and advocating for our families, that's another passion of mine for our military families. So I could go on about that, but I'll be aware of our timeline, but we have a lot of our families serving overseas, and our military families that are quietly in our civilian communities and need a voice. So I'm going to be working on that, and I'll let you know when it's accomplished. I'll hand it over.
I'm very interested to hear what happens with that. Please let us know. Rebecca Tuttle, would you mind standing up just for a minute? Rebecca, United Way has gotten involved with parent leadership training. And, you know, we think of United Way, and it's so broad, and it has so many different things that it supports. How did United Way get involved with this?
Well, actually, my role with United Way is a little bit unique in that I'm actually the West Central Connecticut Parent C Coordinator and the Bristol Discovery Coordinator. So just complementing what David had already said, it makes sense to have discovery and parent leadership intertwined. We kind of saw it coming for a while, but now we're seeing, okay, the direction that we're going. And we are focused on bringing parents to the table, not only for parent leadership training throughout West Central Connecticut, but to the table in our discovery initiatives so that they, their voice is heard, so that they're not just a parent, so that when we are driving initiatives that benefit children, that are helping children read, that are helping children grow, that it's parent-driven, and it's parent passion that drives it. Because ultimately, you want those parents to continue those activities at home and reinforce them there. So being part of the United Way is a very exciting experience, but being a PLTI graduate is an extreme bonus, so.
Thank you, Rebecca. Is there anybody in the audience that I have neglected who has been burning up wanting to say something? Because this is your opportunity. Don't be afraid to raise your hand. Okay.
Hi, everybody. My name is Mary Martinez, and I'm a PLTI graduate from Middletown. But I live in Hartford. One of my things, my project was Set Free. And the reason why that became, that birthed in me was because I looked at the city of Hartford, and I seen so many depressions, the children and parents and all kinds of nationalities in our, in our city, and it became a passion. Now, I want to tell you something about my PLTI class. My PLTI class, I call it was boot camp for me. Because they really pushed me. I cry, I laugh, we had a great, great time. It was very powerful. Now, I have done so much since 2006. Since that become, that became my passion, one of my strongest areas is, was, and is, still, and I take less cases, was advocating for the children of the city of Hartford, and some for the city, for the state of Connecticut. And I have, and I became one of the most powerful advocates for the state of Connecticut. That's one of the things. One of the areas that I have, that I thank God and PLTI, my strengths are. The other thing is that I became maybe like in eight different boards. Department of Children and Family, Mental Health and additional services, executive committees, I mean, all over. Today I stand, and I can say that I'm also involved in politics. I'm a commissioner on the status of Hartford Women. And I am very grateful because they gave me, for some reason or another, in the midst of all, the powerful, and they just opened my wings to fly. And I believe Doug has a lot to do with this. I remember them giving me a class that said, do what you can where you are. And I looked at that, I'm like, what? And everybody, everybody's class is different, but mine was different. So I am grateful to, for y'all to be, well, y'all was very hard on me.
Is that so, Doug? Were you hard on her?
Well, I tried. And I'm very proud that you turned out the way you turned out. But I think this is, this is testimony to the powerful investment that's been made in parents in our state. And it's an investment that's had just a fantastic return. We only have 20 or 30 groups going on at any one
We only have 20 or 30 groups going on at any one time. There's no reason why we shouldn't have 169. And, but the cost of it is not that expensive. It's probably the cost of sending two children through, or three children through elementary school. And so the return on the investment is just fantastic. I would love to see, it's great that these philanthropy organizations have done so much, and that the state has done so much, but we could do a lot more in the way of investment to produce this kind of fantastic result that we've had.
Doug, thank you. And I should say that some classes are going to be starting up soon, and we'll give you some information about that, but I think I agree with you that there should be one in every town. I think we've sort of come to the end of the evening, but I do want to give each of our panelists a chance to speak. Is there somebody else who wants to talk? Do you want to say something?
I just wanted to ask if Donna would be kind enough to explain to parents how they can get involved, where they can find information, and also to explain what the actual time commitment is, and whether or not there's any financial cost to parents.
Okay, great. Point, thank you, Elton.
As Doug has mentioned, we are probably in about 23 communities here in Connecticut, not always all operational at the same time, but there's a wonderful website with the Commission on Children where you can find all of the current sites, their coordinators, and usually an email or a link to their local website to find out more information. In Connecticut, there are 20-week sites, which is the original plan of PLTI, but there are also 18-week sites to combine a few of the classes, and so it depends on which town and community that you will find yourself in. The cost to parents is the investment of time and energy over the 18 or 20 weeks. Childcare, if the sites are providing it, is included. If it's a CLTI site, that is also included, no cost. And CLTI, for those of you who don't know, is literacy-based, so it does that wonderful support of education and literacy, particularly between the ages of three and 12. And parents, they actually get an opportunity in some communities to even apply for like many grants to do their community project work that we've talked about, that they each do, bringing their passion to life in a very deliberate and civic way in each community. But it is a long commitment, but I will say to you, as mentioned earlier by Elaine, the 20 weeks are not because Elaine and others sat in a room somewhere and said, "We're going to do this with parents or for parents." Parents said, "This is what we want," and after they had their first 10 weeks said, "And now we also want this, and so we'd like you to increase this so that we can cover these areas in order to build our civic toolkit." So parent leaders, your fellow parents, said, "This is what's best for us as parents." And so I would encourage anyone who thinks 20 weeks is too long, come on board the journey. It will go by very quickly.
And Donna, we're talking about one evening a week.
It's one evening a week.
And give us an idea of what the curriculum involves, some of the topics that are covered.
There are two different phases. Phase one really explores you as an individual leader, where you find yourself in examining your thoughts around leadership, how that impacts your role in your family, and how it begins to frame how you will interact within community. So we cover things like thriving with diversity and group process, how to solve a problem, how to define it and work towards a solution, looking at how you communicate effectively, the intentional use of language, because if you're going to be a civic leader, there are certain contexts and frameworks you must operate within in order to have the same civic language that state legislators understand, Board of Ed members, city council, and though it's language you might use every day, there's a certain way to position it, and it's an intentional way that you must learn to use it. In phase two, you really build that civic toolkit, where you learn about policy from not only public policy in general, but the public policy of the budget, law, which is the king of public policy. And I often joke and say, "If law is king, then the budget is queen." You also learn how the city works, how your state works, how to really understand how to interact within civic society effectively as a parent leader.
And there's even a media portion of it, isn't there?
That's in the first phase, the power of the media, and how to use it effectively. But one of the key things is really discovering your voice and using it, and that happens also at the end of phase one, as parents are transitioning into phase two. The one thing I would like to share, and this can be my closing, is that 20 years ago, Elaine Zimmerman, through the Commission on Children, gave a gift to the state of Connecticut, known as PLTI. It's a gift that has kept on giving throughout the state. At his birth for CLTI, a teen leadership initiative, has partnered with the Center for School Change around Parent C, has endorsed the work of People Empowering People with UConn, but now it is actually going throughout the nation. So not only the parents in Bridgeport, in Middletown, in Danbury, in Stanford, but there are parents in Thermopolis, Wyoming, on Wind River Reservation in Wyoming, in Denver, Colorado, in Stockton, California, in Alexandria, Virginia, and areas in Rhode Island, and we are looking into going into New Orleans. We have people doing this initiative in Grand Rapids, Michigan, and Rochester, New York, Long Island, New York. That's national. But last year, there was an international impact, because we were fortunate to be a part of an exchange with South Africa, where members of the pre-learning community, the early learning community in South Africa, came to Bridgeport after a team of Bridgeport residents had gone there, which I had the honor of being part of, but they came to PLTI, and they were part of our phase-two class cycles, the life cycles of children and the structure and function of family. And you saw that Bridgeport parents connected with parents from Johannesburg, Rustenburg, and the Bafra King Nation of South Africa, and had an amazing conversation on democracy and civics that was totally diverse in thought, but find, they were able to find common ground around democracy and what matters for children. That's a gift that is not only an investment, but it is a gift that keeps on giving and changes the lives of so many. So it's really an honor, and all I can say to the Commission on your 20th, thank you. Thank you, on behalf of Bridgeport and our nation. Thank you.
Well, I'm afraid somebody has to speak after Donna. I promise each of you would get a chance to make a closing statement, and I don't know how you come back after that, but David, I'd just like to hear from you as we wrap up our program.
Sure, three points. When I grow up, I want to be like John Hensiger. That'd be one, what a vision of retirement he has. The second is, there's a new book out that I like a lot called Everybody Leads by Paul Schmitz, the head of Public Allies, and that's sort of, you know, a big, high-support civics engagement program across the nation. And it occurs to me that that's within the context of an organization. PLTI gives people the skills to make it happen, with democracy skills, as Donna put it, in communities. And the third thing, I'm signing on with Donna, the overwhelming thing I felt tonight was gratitude. I feel a lot of gratitude toward Elaine and all of her co-conspirators in on this, Doug and Donna, and, excuse me, Dawn and Andrew certainly, but also and above all, to the 2,300 alumni, whose good work we find in everyday, you know, circumstances in every community. And as I said, if you'd send one of these graduations and listen to the folks, if you emerged with a dry eye, you didn't bring your whole cell. Thank you.
Thank you. Trish, I want to give you a moment to kind of express your thoughts tonight.
Well, I have an invitation. January 12, 2013, is the beginning of our next PLTI class here in Hartford at the Women's League. We will be meeting on Thursday evenings. There are a number of things that came to mind tonight. It's so extraordinary to be in a room and hear about 20 years. So often, funders talk about, "Is the change sustainable?" Well, this change is so sustainable. And I think we've talked about leaders as individuals, we've talked about family, we've talked about people doing things for their community, but let's not lose sight of the fact that parent leadership is a community. One of the things that I'm so proud of in Hartford is the Parent Leadership Training Institute Alumni Association. So as we bring leaders together and people find their place in many different ways, what I'm seeing in Hartford are parent leaders who are extending, not even their hands, their arms to others, and saying, "Come be with us." Because parent leadership takes a lot of support. And we've heard some extraordinary stories tonight, but we have a lot of work to do when it comes to truly being embraced as a parent leader. So the idea of parent leadership as a community, it goes so far beyond a program. I think a program perhaps is, was the gleam in Elaine's eye many years ago, but it has become so much more than that, and I think there's room for everyone. I'm not a PLTI graduate per se. I was a coordinator and what's called the glue person. I love that idea. I call myself crazy glue. But when you become part of the PLTI community, it is something that not only changes your life, but it becomes a home that you can continue to live in.
Well, that was wonderful. And for our director, just before we go to Kathy Abercrombie, this is the woman that everyone is talking about. This is Elaine Zimmerman, who was the founder and who has given us this great gift, and Elaine, thank you for that, and for all the things you've done for children in our state. State Representative Kathy Abercrombie, you get the chance to wrap this up.
Wow, big shoes, I know, big shoes to fill here. You know, the one thing I would like to leave you with is how I became an elected official, because I think my story is going to tell you that any one of you sitting here today could be sitting where I am right now. Back in 2004, Jim Abrams, who was our state rep, had won in the election, and when 2005 came for him to be sworn in, he decided that he wasn't going to take his seat for personal reasons. I was a member of the town committee, had never held elected office, and I got a phone call from, at that time, the majority leader, who was Chris Donovan from Meriden, and our town chair, who said, "Kath, we'd like you to run for state rep." And I said, "No, I can't do that." As we all sit here and say, day in and day out, I'm just a mom. I don't have the time to do it. It isn't something I've ever given much thought to, you know, really, thank you, I so appreciate you thinking of me, but it's really not for me. So I got off the phone, and my husband happened to be home that night, and Elaine laughs because I shared this story. Sorry, honey, if you're watching. And my husband says to me, "Who was that?" And I said, "Oh, hon, Chris Donovan's got this crazy idea that I could run for state rep." And he goes, "You said no?" And I said, "Well, you know, hon, I'm the glue in this house." You know, I had three sons in high school at the time, so my kids were older, you know, but my husband traveled, and I was the homemaker. You know, I did everything in the house. I said, "You know, this is going to have to change, and I'm going to really need your help. I can't be stressing about what's going on at home." I, you know, as moms, right? We juggle a lot. So he says, "Well, I really think you need to call Chris back and really talk about it and make a decision." And I'm like, "Are you sure?" And he's like, "Yep." So I called Chris, he comes over the next day. Now, because it's a special election, it was only a six-week campaign. So needless, yeah, not a bad thing, right? So needless to say, I got out, started door knocking. I had enjoyed door knocking, because I had run for Board of Ed back in 2003 and hadn't won, so I had enjoyed that part of the experience. Won by only 125 votes, and when they say, "Every vote counts," it does. You only have to win by one vote, right? One more than the other guy. And so my point is, is that any of you could do this, because I'm no different than any of you. You know, I ran because I believed in my community, and I believed I had something to offer and that I could make a difference. And I will tell you, when I first got elected, my husband was 100% behind me. Some years since then, I've gone down a little bit to 80%. Because it does, yeah, sorry, hon, because it does take over your life, but in a good way. And, you know, you all did PLTI because you're passionate people, and you bring that to the state legislature, you know, and you get involved with it, and yes, you bring it home. And yes, because I had not held elected office before, my first year, I cried a lot. I did. I was very, very overwhelmed, you know? So a couple of points I would make, start at the local level, it really does help you to navigate the system better, but you don't have to. I'm a perfect example, because here I am, almost 10 years later. So thank you. Happy birthday to PLTI, and thank you for doing this, Diane.
Well, we hope that we have inspired you to look into this parent leadership training, or maybe some other opportunities. If you'd like to know a little bit more, there are companion documents for tonight's program. You can find those at our website, www.ctn.com, and then click on the Town Hall image, or you can visit ct-n.com/osh, for Old State House Town Hall, and you can find some information there. We at the Old State House and at CTN hope that you've enjoyed the discussion, and maybe you've been inspired. If you have been inspired to develop your leadership capabilities, here's an opportunity, not only the one that Trish mentioned for parents in the city of Hartford, but if you'd like to join a class, they are starting in nine locations across the state. Dinner, childcare, transportation is available. For more information, you can go to www.tlti-ct.org. And if you want to bring leadership training to your community, contact the Commission on Children at 860-240-0085. And if you're watching us, and you're watching this program, and you don't have access to a computer to go online to look up the training, you can also call the Commission on Children. Again, the number's 860-240-0085. On behalf of everybody at the Old State House, and on behalf of the Commission on Children and the Parent Leadership Training Institute and the people at CTN, I'm Diane Smith, and I want to say thank you very much for joining us for this important discussion.